Good evening. I now call the Wednesday, December fourteenth, meeting of the Hampton City School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Afanjah?
Here.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are here except for Ms. Banks Gray, who previously asked to be excused from tonight's meeting. At the present time, we'll move forward. Is Nature Taylor here by chance? I don't know if we, if Nature Taylor had a chance to come in or not. All right. So moving forward with our pledge of allegiance, I will ask our former school board student rep, who's now a college student, Mr. Joey Bowers, to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Joey. Good to see you again and welcome home for the break. I do apologize on behalf of the board for starting a little late. We had a closed session that went just a little long. We had several items that we had to discuss that some of you may smile about a little bit later on this evening when we talk about some things that we discussed. But hopefully, you won't worry too much about us being late as we will now invite our musical group from the Kilgore Gifted Center to come forward to sing us happy for the holidays. How about that?
How sweet. Yes.
Happy holiday.
Let's give them another round of applause. What a fine representation of Kilgore Gifted Center. And what a way to start off our holiday season as well. So at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Question for you.
Before you adopt it, you need to amend it so that you know that you're adding that one action agenda item.
I'll amend my motion. Mr. Chair, I move approval of the agenda with the addition of action item 6.07, personnel issue number 2022, DAC 303.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Ms. Goral for recognitions.
Well, thank you Chairman Mason, Vice Chair Cherry, our school board, Superintendent Smith, and members of our Hampton City Schools family. At this time, would Mr. Samuels please proceed to the microphone on the stage for tonight's recognitions? All right. Well, tonight's going to be a special evening. It is our last board meeting for the 2022 school year, but we also have some wonderful individuals to recognize this evening. So super excited about this part of the program. So our first recognition is going to be celebrating one of our sixth grade students from the Kilgore Gifted Center with Lily Nichols. Please join me right beside the podium. I'm gonna have you stand right here and look up at the board. I'm gonna say a few nice things about you before you get to go onstage. How's that sound? All right. So as I mentioned, Lily is a sixth grade student at Kilgore Gifted Center. She earned first place in the youth creative digital arts category at the State Fair of Virginia. The fair is an annual event at the Meadow Event Park in Dawswell, Virginia, and this year it was held September 23rd through October 2nd, 2022. Lily competed against young people from across the Commonwealth of Virginia and took first place in the digital arts category. Let's give Lily a big round of applause.
Okay, so as Lily is joining us on the stage, it is my privilege to showcase the artwork that Ms. Lily won first place on the state level. So first place, youth creative art, youth creative art, State Fair of Virginia. So this is her artwork, and I'm gonna present it back to Ms. Lily so she can have it because, Ms. Lily, that is yours. But I just wanted to make sure that you have it. And then I will say also a few kind words about Ms. Lily. And I have already presented Ms. Lily the artwork, and I would like to share that her art teacher, Daniel Smith, said some things about this wonderful young lady. Lily is a true artist who loves to draw in her free time. In class, she takes the initiative to do the next assignment when she is done. While she is confident in her medium of choice, she is also curious to explore new mediums such as ink. Ms. Lily, on behalf of the, our school board chair, Dr. Mason, the Hampton School Board, and Dr. Smith, I would like to present to you this certificate of outstanding achievement and accomplishment. And it reads, "Certificate of Achievement from Hampton School Board." Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Lily Nichols, Kilgore Gifted Center, first place in the youth creative digital artwork category at the State Fair of Virginia. And it is signed by our superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, and our chairman, Dr. Richard Mason.
And Mr. Samuels, before you move on, I know there's, you want to recognize family members in the audience, but Lily has her hands full for a reason. She actually, I believe, created correct cards for each of the board members, holiday cards. So if you would assist her in passing those out to the board members, I'm sure she would appreciate that.
Okay. My apologies, Lily. The board members also want to see.
That is awesome.
Ms. Banks Gray right there, Ms. Lily.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is she ma, do you have one more card? Or do you got them all? Okay, perfect.
So come back over here, Lily. Want to take your artwork?
Waiting for her, for her artwork to make sure that no one runs off with it.
So, Ms. Lily? So would you be so kind to explain this artwork to us? Okay, you're just being modest, aren't you? After you placed first place, you're being so modest.
Mrs. Samuels, she did say she named it. That's interesting.
She named it.
Tell us what it is, Lily.
So tell us what it is, Ms. Lily.
So it took me a while to name it, but I decided to name it Dark Clouds. Cause...
Isn't that cute?
I guess it represents a dark cloud. I don't know.
That is a beautiful name. But before Ms. Lily takes her seat, we would like to recognize any family members, staff members, school administrators, or guests in our audience tonight who are here supporting this talented and beautiful young lady. Please stand and be recognized.
Absolutely.
All right, Ms. Kelly, thank you so much, and you may take your seat. And I see that Principal Lawrence is, thank you so much for sharing her. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Yes, Principal Lawrence. I'm sorry.
Yeah, he's right over there.
You just confused me. I looked this way. I'm all kinds of confused now. All right. So thank you, Lily. Congratulations to you on your accomplishment. So for our next recognition this evening, we are going to be honoring five schools that are here with us tonight. So I'm going to call them up each to come stand beside me at the podium. So for Armstrong School for the Arts with Ms. Millicent Rogers, principal, and Bobby Carroll, school counselor, please join me at the podium. For Burbank Elementary School with Dr. Heidi Brzezinski, principal, and Emily Sims, school counselor, please join us. For Eaton Fundamental Middle School with Dr. Ken Crum, principal, and Teresa Smith, administrative secretary, please join us up front. For Jones Magnet Middle School with Ms. Sharon Slater, principal, and Edwina Harvey Simmons, school counselor, please join us at the podium. And for Kikatan High School with Dr. Violet Whitman, executive principal, and Ms. Stacy Tyson, school counseling coordinator, please join us at the podium. All right, we've got everyone. So representatives from these five schools are here this evening as their respective school was named just a few weeks ago as a Purple Star School by the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children. The Purple Star designation is awarded to military-friendly schools that have demonstrated their commitment to meeting the needs of military-connected students and their families. And to qualify for a Purple Star, schools must have a staff member designated as the point of contact for military students and families. The point of contact serves as the primary link between the military family and the school. Schools must also demonstrate their commitment to meeting the needs of military students by providing resources and programming on issues important to military families, such as academic planning and transitions between schools, divisions, states, and even across countries. Schools earning the award receive a Virginia Purple Star commemorative coin to display and are listed as a Purple Star School on the VDOE website. And that Purple Star School retains that designation for three years before required to apply again. So this is the fifth year that VDOE has designated Purple Star Schools. Since 2018, VDOE and the Council on the Interstate Compact on the Educational Opportunity of Military Children have selected 328 schools across Virginia for the award, of which 192 have been honored twice. This is the first year that schools from our school division, Hampton City Schools, have been designated as a Purple Star School. So I think that deserves a round of applause. And in all honesty, to put it into perspective, you know, Virginia is home to several of the largest and most important military installations in the nation. Currently, there are more than 80,000 school-age military-connected students attending schools in the Commonwealth, just in Virginia. These include students with parents on active duty, in the reserves, or in the Virginia National Guard. So let's give again these five schools a big round of applause for this presentation.
Okay, so would you all please join me on stage to be recognized? So at this time, what I will do, I will present the certificate and a banner to each school board member and get a photo of the school representative. I am going to recognize each school one at a time. Would Ms. Rogers and Ms. Carroll from Armstrong, please step forward? Thank you. On behalf of our chair, Dr. Richard Mason, Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Smith, please accept the certificate of recognition for this outstanding recognition. And Ms. Rogers, it reads, "Certificate of Achievement from the Hampton City School Board." Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Armstrong School of the Art for being named a 2022-2023 Purple Heart School by the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunities for Military Children. Present this to you. And also, would like to present to you the banner, which you're gonna display at Armstrong.
Yes. Thank you.
So let's pull it out. So it can be. So on, so on, so on January the 3rd, when I come by Armstrong, I will see this displayed. All righty. And would Dr. Brzezinski and Ms. Sims from Burbank, please step forward? On behalf of our chair, Dr. Mason, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Jeffrey Smith, please accept the certificate of recognition for this outstanding recognition. And since I have read the certificate, I'm not gonna reread it because it says the same thing. It just only says that your school, Burbank Elementary School, is recognized as the 2022-2023 Purple Star School. Says the same thing as Armstrong. And your banner. And we're gonna proudly display this at Burbank and on January the 3rd, when I visit, it will be on display. All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you. It doesn't get in your way, Mr. Dr. Brzezinski? And next, would Dr. Crum and Ms. Smith from Eaton, please join me at the microphone? How you doing, sir? My sincere condolences. All righty. So once again, on behalf of our chair, Dr. Mason, the Hampton School Board, and our superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, please accept the certificate of recognition for this outstanding recognition. And once again, it says the same thing, but I'm gonna just read it. Eaton Fundamental Middle School for being named 2022-2023 Purple Star Heart, Purple Star School. I said Purple Heart. That's, you have to be wounded. And so, Dr. Crum, here is your banner that will be displayed at Eaton Fundamental Middle School.
Mr. Samuels are very good at rolling up banners.
Oh, yeah. I am a...
I'm impressed.
I'm a very neat person.
I'm very impressed.
Yeah.
We may even put it up on the second for you, Mr. Samuels.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We just put it up on the second, but I won't be there till the third. Okay. We're just having too much fun, aren't we?
We're on Jones.
From Jones. Ms. Slater and Ms. Harvey Simmons, please join me at the microphone. Once again, on behalf of our chair, Dr. Richard Mason, the Hampton School Board, and our superintendent, Dr. Smith, please accept the certificate of recognition for this outstanding recognition. And I'm just gonna recognize... And I'm just gonna recognize Eaton Magnet Middle School, Jones. That's Dr. Crum earlier. Jones Magnet Middle School for the 2022-23 Purple Heart School. Has been recognized, and-
Purple Heart.
Purple Star?
Purple Star.
Purple Heart again?
Purple Star.
Oh my gosh. My apologies. I, you know, I'm seeing all this purple color. And so I'm gonna fold it up again for you. Make sure that it's nice and neat. Uh, Ms. Slater. And last but not least, we have Dr. Whitman and Ms. Tyson from Kickitane. They have joined me on behalf of our school board chair, Dr. Mason, the Hampton School Board, the superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, please accept the certificate of recognition for this outstanding recognition. And it's clear to say Kickitane High School, 2022-2023 Purple Star School. I said Purple Star.
You did say Purple Star. Yes, very good.
And you have your banner. And Ms. Slater and, uh, Ms. Whitman and Ms. Tyson will be by on the 3rd, January 3rd, to see this displayed in front of the building, or inside the building, wherever you want to place it. Well, thank you all. And I, but once again, before you return to your seats, we would like to recognize, uh, Ms. Ann Bain. Where's Ms. Ann Bain? Ms. Ann Bain, can you please? The Division's Director of Community and Legislative Relations, and her work and collaboration with our military-connected families. And if, at this time, if there are any staff members, school administrators, or guests in the, in our audience tonight who are here supporting these schools, please stand to be recognized.
Thank you all very much, and congratulations.
And please.
What an honor. All right, well, before our final recognition this evening, once everyone leaves the stage, I'm gonna push the table back just a little bit because we have a larger crowd coming up to make room. So, our final recognition this evening provides us the opportunity to celebrate student athletes from Phoebus High School. Phoebus is 2022-2023 football team. So would Coach Jeremy Blunt, would you, your coaching staff, and your team, please come forward and join me on either side of the podium? It's gonna take just a few moments for everyone to join us. Y'all can go all the way to the end. You got a license to drive that? And gentlemen, if you have to, you can come behind us and make a second row. Come on through. Well, I know no one's messing with me. I mean, look at this. So before I start with why we're really here tonight, I want to start out with the regional championship game. On Saturday, November the 26th, Phoebus High School defeated Lake Taylor High School at Darling Stadium with a score of 42 to 16 to win the Class III Region A Championship Game. So they were region champs. Let's give them a round of applause. All right, next, these young men played in the state semifinals on December 3rd, again at Darling Stadium. They took on Brentsville High School, and the Phantoms had another big win with a score of 58 to 14. The final game of the year for the Phantoms came just this past Saturday, December the 10th, at Liberty University in Lynchburg, Virginia. Phoebus played Heritage High School from Lynchburg, Virginia for the Class III State Championship. With a final score of 48 to 7, the Phantoms have brought home back-to-back state championships. So let's give them the biggest round of applause yet. And Mr. Samuels, before you get to take my bodyguards from me away here, I'm gonna direct everyone's attention to the screen just to view a few highlights from that championship game. And if you notice at the very end of that video, it said, "The Academy of Digital Video Production at Phoebus High School." So a very big thank you to those students from that academy for attending the game, capturing all the footage, and then sharing it with Peg TV, who then created this video. So that just shows you what our students are doing out there and the support. And I will say, I've watched that video several times, gentlemen, because I, you know, a part of that editing process, and every time I've watched it, it's put such a smile on my face and just given me chills. So, congratulations.
Ms., 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 Ms. Goral, I, uh, before we, um, ask, uh, Coach Blunt to come to the stage, I just want to say something about number 12. Number 12, I watched that, um, Brentsville game. I was in, in the, in the stand. And when you fractured your foot, I saw the fracture. You played four additional plays. Four additional plays. And it tells you your resiliency, your commitment, not only to Coach Blunt, but to these young men that is standing next to you. I don't want to applaud you for your commitment, although you were hurt. You didn't know how, how significant the injury was, but I saw that. So I just want to say thank you. I just want to say that. And at this time, I would like to call Coach Blunt and the team to the stage.
Y'all may have to make a couple rows. Call the ones in the back.
You know, I'll just move over, Coach Blunt. Yeah, we will just move over. All right, ready? So before I present the certificate, I would like to share a few more things about our Phantoms. Phoebus had quite a successful, um, season. They finished the season with a record of 15 and 0 to include defeating, to include defeating the number-one team in the state at that time, as well as back-to-back Class A Six State Champions, Oscar Smith High School, with a win of 56 to 0. This is Phantom's first unbeaten season since they had three straight from 2028 to 2010, and the program's ninth state crown in 10 trips to the finals, beginning with the 2001 team that Coach Blunt captained as a player. On behalf of our, uh, chair, Dr. Mason, our vice chair, Ann Cherry, and I, Ann, come over here. Come. I need Ann up here. Cause you know, Ann has been with this when she was a rep. And I know this is special to you, and this means a lot to you. And so, Vice Chair Ann Cherry, the Hampton School Board, and our superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, I am extremely, Coach Blunt, honored to present the team, a banner, and a certificate of achievement from Hampton City Schools for a job well done and for capturing the Class III, Class III State Championship. Not just, this doesn't mean, it means a lot, not just to Hampton City School, but the city overall. Because y'all have done something that other division envy. Nine-state championship, back-to-back, man. So, I am going to read the certificate, and then I will present you with the banner. Ms. Cherry, I'm gonna have you read it.
Oh, okay. I am honored too. These are my babies. Okay. Certificate of Achievement, and somehow, achievement just doesn't seem strong enough. You all knocked it out of the park. Certificate of knocking it out of the park, okay? Congratulations from Hampton City Schools. This certificate is proudly presented to Phoebus Football Team, Class III State Champions, signed on this date by Jeffrey Smith, superintendent, your biggest cheerleader, and Dr. Richard Mason, chair of the board. Congratulations.
And then I am going to present the banner, but instead of giving it to Coach Blunt, I'm just gonna make sure that we give it to the players. But before, uh, Coach Blunt, uh, takes the mic and his team return to the seat, we would like to recognize Ms. Beth Mir. Ms. Mir is the school division's coordinator of athletics. She is unable to join us this evening. However, we still would like to give her a round of applause for all of the work she has done behind the scenes for our teams. Not just Phoebus, but Hampton High, Kickitane, and Bethel. Also, I would like to ask our Phoebus administration under the leadership of Executive Principal James Harris, as well as Mr. Maurice Ward, the school's athletic director, any family members, colleagues, and other special guests who are here tonight to support our Phantoms, to please stand to be recognized. Furthermore, let's give Coach Blunt, his coaching staff, and our phenomenal student athletes another round of applause. But before I give the mic back to Ms. Kelly Goral, we'd like to have a few words from Coach Blunt.
First of all, I would like to thank Dr. Smith and the entire Hampton City School Central Office, Dr. Mason, and Hampton City Schools School Board, um, Coach Ward, Mr. Coakley, um, Phoebus High School, and parents, most of all. Our bubble has been extremely supportive this year. We, we, there's a lot that takes place with our coaches to get these young men prepared, but we have a strong parent support system that, I'm gonna tell you, it really helps us out. So, from the school system, we appreciate you all. Parents, we appreciate you all. Um, coaches, I thank you, men, cause I couldn't do it without you. And these special group of young men right here, the, these guys played a, an excellent brand of football this year. It was dominant. Um, this was the year of, you know, making things right and wrongs, that we called it. You know, it started with Oscar Smith, and Lake Taylor in the playoffs and the regional championship, and Heritage of Lynchburg, who beat us, our only, um, championship loss back in 2018, my first appearance as head coach. These guys made it right the other day. So, it was a beautiful, beautiful year this year. I think they represented Hampton City Schools well. Their character, their integrity inside the classroom, on the field, off of the field, these guys demonstrated something that I am so proud to call myself their coach. So, thank you all for your support, and you know, we're gonna keep working during the offseason, send these seniors off the right way, and get this next crop going in. Get ready for next year.
Thank you, Coach Blunt. Congratulations, guys. If you need help with that, Mr. Samuels is really good at rolling up a banner. Mr. Samuels, they might need some banner-rolling 101 over here. Chair Mason, that does conclude our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Goral. We'll give everybody a chance to, to leave, so we'll just take a, just a minute and wait on them to, um, exit the auditorium before we continue. All right, as the crowd clears, and as the dust settles, I see that we have State Delegate A.C. Cordoza here with us. I want to say hello. Thank you so much for joining us, and he's definitely no stranger to our school board meetings, and so we appreciate your support. All right. Next item on the agenda is Item Three, the Consent Agenda. 3.01 Personnel Report 22-21. 3.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of November 2nd, 2022. Item 3.03 Certification of the Closed Session of November 2nd, 2022. 3.04 School Board Consent to Receipt of Donations December 2022. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Any discussion? Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjia?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Item Four on the agenda, Superintendent and Staff Reports. So I will now turn the meeting over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Vice Chair, and members of the school board. I would ask that, this time, our Chief Financial Officer, Brittany Branch, to come forward, and she's going to provide the board with an update to the American Rescue Plan, our ESSER Spending Plan. And we're required to do this and to ensure that we receive stakeholder input as well, so I will turn it over to Ms. Branch, and she will provide additional context as we go forward.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Cherry, school board members, and the Hampton community. It's my pleasure tonight to present an update to our American Rescue Plan, ESSER III Spending Plan. As you remember, last year, we first discussed this grant allocation, which was authorized under the American Rescue Plan, and we received a little over fifty-four, almost fifty-five million dollars. As part of this grant, the funds cover March 13th, 2020, which we all remember that day, and it also goes through September 30th of 2024. There is a link to the allowable uses for the grant on this slide, but there were three major guidelines under this grant application. First being that twenty percent of the funds needed to be used to address learning loss. Also, the return to instruction plan for all school divisions needed to be publicly available. And then lastly, the spending plan for the grant also had to be publicly available on the division's website. And I've included links to the Hampton City Schools Instructional and Health Mitigation Plan, and also our spending plan that was previously released July 29th of 2021, both of which are on our division's website. So since we last met, the application was submitted last September, and it was approved out of Virginia Department of Education. And then from there, we set up the budget within our financial system, and did notifications to departments to begin spending. We did have to look at repurposing some savings, because once we actually implement programs and actually start purchasing resources, there were some changes in costs. So those savings were repurposed and submitted to the Virginia Department of Education for approval, and that is part of the standard process when monitoring and administering grants. We did individual check-ins, and those continue to happen with the individual departments, and that's so we make sure that we are keeping track of the spending process. I also do progress reports with the division leadership team periodically, just to keep everyone at the leadership level informed on how we are spending with this grant as well. We also do monthly submissions to the Virginia Department of Education, and that's when we're requesting reimbursement for the expenditures that have been expended or paid for. And at the time that I started this presentation, we were at seventy-five percent use of the grant. That percentage continues to increase as we steadily spend. So back on November 4th of 2022, so last month, all school divisions received notification that we were required to reengage the public on consulting with the public on how to utilize these grant funds, and to make updates to our plans where needed, using a new template that has to be done by December 31st. So as part of this new requirement, we attended a webinar that was held by VDOE on November 15th, and then on November 21st, we actually released a new stakeholder survey. And what this survey asks of respondents, one, to comment and give feedback on our current plan, and we updated it so they could see everything that was included. But then also, we asked, you know, what are some additional items that you feel that we could also look at when looking at learning loss and then other impacts of COVID-19? So based on the survey that we released, we received five hundred and eighty-five responses. Seventy percent of the responses came from parents and guardians, and some of the most common responses were around teacher pay, hiring additional instructional staff, also tutoring remediation, after-school programs, special education and substitute pay, and that's just some of them. Actually included in the updated spend plan, it does include the survey results, and that was a requirement of the Virginia Department of Education, so that will be included on our division's website, but it is within Board Docs. So when going through the responses, some of the things such as teacher pay, I know that is something that we're always focused on, is a part of our strategic plan, not only teacher pay, but support staff pay as well. But when it comes to one-time grants, we have to make sure that we don't utilize one-time funding sources for an item that needs to be sustained in future years. Also, with looking at hiring additional staff, that came up a lot within the survey, but we wanted to make sure that we were very careful on how many new positions that we funded with this grant opportunity, because similar to, you know, a pay increase, we have to look at, you know, what positions can we sustain beyond this grant as well? So based on the results of the survey, and also making sure that, you know, we still properly manage the grant, because these are one-time funds, we did make some updates to the ESSER Spending Fund, and a link again is included within this presentation, but the spending plan continues to be broken down by those four major categories, first being prevention and mitigation strategies, second being learning loss, also student academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs, and then our other uses of funds. And we'll look at each category, because there has been some changes in the percentage since the initial plan. So first, starting with prevention and mitigation strategies, so forty-eight percent, or twenty-six point one million dollars, has been allocated in this area. Initially, within the plan, this category represented forty-seven percent, and it still continues to fund the forty-one buses, where we were looking to add air conditioning, purchase new buses with air conditioning, and then installing HEPA air filtration systems, and these buses were actually ordered last school year. Also, the plan continues to include HVAC and roof replacements, and designs have been completed, and those contracts are steadily being finalized for the work to begin. We did make a change to the budget as it relates to sanitization supplies. We've used other COVID grants to address those needs, but also we're looking at increasing our inventory, so we continue to support our schools and departments. And that was the major reason for that change in percentage from forty-seven percent to forty-eight percent. Moving to unfinished learning or learning loss, that represents twenty-nine percent, or sixteen point one million dollars, of the grant allocation. The original percentage for learning loss was twenty-five percent, and it's always good to note that this is above and beyond that minimum twenty percent requirement under the grant. So in the area of learning loss, the plan includes the funding of the twenty-two learning recovery facilitators. In the initial plan, we originally were looking to hire twenty-two additional teachers, but we needed to prioritize hiring teachers within our operating budget, so we revamped the grant and included the recovery facilitators, and they're helping to provide that targeted student support, not only in elementary schools, but also within our secondary schools as well. The plan also included hiring additional early reading intervention instructional assistance. The initial plan included six, but it has been updated to add an additional one to bring the total to seven, and this is in addition to the early reading instructional assistance that are funded within our Fund 50 operating fund. But that additional assistant just came through collaboration with our English Language Arts Department and our Elementary Leadership Department as well, to support Burbank. The plan continues to include remediation, internal tutoring, also external tutoring services, student books, text, literacy kits. Our, it says middles, oh, I think I changed it, great. So originally, we had our middle school arts and literacy camp, but just through continued collaboration, we wanted to include the high schools in that work as well, so we changed it within the grant to a secondary arts and literacy program. And then continued funding for our digital learning resources and our after-school program called University Corner, which is just an expansion of the Twenty-First Century Grant Program. And we're continuously spending in these areas, so these aren't really new items within the plan. So then moving to other uses of funds, this is fourteen percent, or seven point five million dollars, and I like to call this the catch-all bucket, as there always is one in a budget, but the majority of these items really do still support student learning, even though they're not categorized as learning loss. So looking at our other uses of funds, it does include the renewal of our division-wide Zoom license, also funding for our sign-on bonus, Chromebook and teacher laptop replacement, continued funding for our digital program technicians, and also our internet connectivity position as well, all of which were added because we expanded our Chromebooks to be division-wide. There have been some changes to the plan in this area, the first being the repurposing of initially having indirect costs within the grant, but through doing some further analysis, we have recommended, within our application, to repurpose those indirect costs to fund the non-SOQ portion of the pandemic relief bonus that we previously presented to the school board last month. And really what that allows us to do, it helps us to free up local funds within our operating budget, so that we can address some one-time needs. For example, I've been collaborating with Dr. Caggianno on some additional instructional supplies in our curriculum areas, and then also looking at some more capital projects as well. We did have to remove some items, because we had other funding sources that were available, so you will not see here the food service van or the food service food truck, but those things will still be done, as they will be funded through Fund 51, the Food and Nutrition Services Budget. And then last changes include the funding of a health services supervisor, and then also a Title I van. The last category, which represents nine percent of the grant application, or five million dollars, is the student academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs. And within this category, not much has really changed. Still continuing to fund communities and schools, also a restorative justice model consultant, our social, emotional screener, not only for our students, but also for our staff, also enrollment and attendance specialists, student engagement specialists. In our initial plan, it did include one to support our early childhood program, but we did also add one to support our middle school students and families as well. And then also student achievement assessment stipends, and that continued partnership with our Community Services Board. So that really concludes the presentation. Our next steps include, as part of our public comment period, not only did we get public comment through the survey, but also as part of our normal public comment period tonight, people have the opportunity to provide any feedback as well, and then we will submit any changes to the Virginia Department of Education throughout the duration of the grant, and we just continue to monitor it as well through that September 30th, 2024 deadline. I am happy to answer any questions at this time.
All right. Thank you so much. Any questions from board members? Mr. Samuels?
My apologies, Ms. Branch, great presentation. So I have two questions. First one with the learning loss. Will this program be extended into the summer?
So we have our University Corner, and that runs throughout the school year and also in the summer, and we actually also have additional grants that are outside of the American Rescue Plan that were competitive, so we actually went out for additional grants to do a elementary arts and literacy camp, also our FLEX program, that was also funded through another grant program. So the learning loss initiatives will continue through the summer.
So it's year-round?
Yes.
Okay, and I see Dr. Caggianno there shaking his head like, yeah, perfect. Second question, and as it relates to the funding to purchase sanitization supplies or products, I know since many, you know, there's such a high demand for those kind of items, is Dr. Cop, not, I would say Dr. Copeland, Dr. Bolin, so do you know if Dr. Bolin's plan, Dr. Smith, or Ms. Branch, you know, so since there's just limited supply chain, a high demand for these items, what's the plan to ensure that, because we have a timeframe to spend this money, what's the plan to make sure that we get all these supplies, sanitation supplies that we are, that we're gonna need? So how are we gonna, what's the plan to make sure that we achieve that?
So one of the things that we did, we went ahead and started purchasing more than what the demand was, and we utilized a work order system, so we keep more than what's needed, but through that work order system, it helps to formalize the process of actually, you know, getting supplies to our schools and departments. So that helps operations to be able to see, all right, at what quantity are we at, do we need to start repurchasing, so that we make sure that we continue to have those items available.
Okay, so is there a plan, like if we have a particular vendor that may, may not be able to provide us in a timely manner, is there a plan to look at other vendors that could potentially provide the service or supplies that we need?
Yes, we absolutely do that, and we don't stick with just one vendor when purchasing those supplies.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's all my questions.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Yes, wonderful presentation, Ms. Branch. I just had a question concerning other uses of funds. I saw that there was a health services supervisor, I'm wondering if that's a new position, or that, is that something that's, that's a new position, right?
Yes, so it's part of the work of implementing our health and mitigation plan, and really making sure we have not only coverage when we do have nurses out, but also making sure we have direct supervision for any LPNs in the division. That position was entered into the grant to make sure that we have coverage for that.
Would they be, I hate to use the word housed, so would they be located at the school board office as a staff member, or what would that position consist of, basically? Where would it be housed?
That position does report to our Director of Health Services, Glory Gill. I am not sure exactly where they're housed permanently. I believe that they are out and about in the schools oftentimes, because I can't say that I actually see them a lot at SAC, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But we can get that information.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Any other board members? Ms. Cherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Branch, and I was just whispering to Dr. Smith, and he assured me, yes, we swam when we talk about vendors, right?
Yes, we follow our procurement process, which includes multiple quotes with one, at least one being, it's swam.
Okay, Mrs. Samuel's comments made me think about that, whether or not we did. I thought we did, I just wanted to clear that up. And secondly, some of us just returned from a CUBE conference, Council of Urban Boards of Education, and I really was surprised to see how many members of various boards from across the state, different states across the United States, could not say what they were using ESSER funds for. And not only could not say it, but in one workshop, one of the presenters said, "You need to get with your superintendent and administration and let them know, you need to know what's going on with the ESSER funds." So, you know, I just had to speak up and let them know, we don't need to ask, because we're always given information about ESSER funding, the updates and that kind of thing. And that was just part and parcel, Dr. Smith, of us being at that conference, finding out, even with some wonderful information that was imparted, I mean, wonderful information. We are so far ahead of the game in Hampton City Schools in so many areas. Dr. Caggianno, one committee did something on... Dr. Cagiano, one committee did something on dashboards and some other things, and I just had to say, you could have done that with your eyes closed, walking backwards. And, and even the enthusiasm in the room, there was none. And I was thinking how blessed we are to have people in Hampton City Schools who not only know what they're doing, but know how to get it across. So I just wanted to say that. Shout out.
And Dr. Cagiano, there are people across the country now that knows who Dr. Cagiano is because she was loud. Yes, she was. Any other comments from board members? All right, Dr. Smith?
Thank you, sir. With no other questions, we'll move to the next report. And that would be certainly our business and operations, the financial update for the board.
And good evening again. So tonight, we're presenting the October two thousand and twenty-two monthly board report. Our revenues totaled sixty-eight point seven million dollars and were twenty-nine point seven nine percent higher when compared to the prior fiscal year. And this difference is due to increased state funding and also always that timing of our local governing bodies payment, which always will vary from month to month just based on what our cash flow needs are. Our cumulative expenditures and encumbrances, they totaled eighty-five point four million dollars. And this was four percent lower when compared to the prior fiscal year. As of October, we do have the fall membership number. That number that was submitted to the Virginia Department of Education was nineteen thousand and two. Our actual budget was based on a average daily membership of eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy. So that is good news, that is an increase of about one hundred and thirty-two. So what happens with the information that is submitted as part of the fall membership report that gets included as part of the reforecast that we should be getting at the end of this week? So I do expect there to be an increase in state funding. What that actual amount is, we will not know until we see the template. But I do believe it will be a positive impact for the school division. And then as always, you have a list of transfers to and from the technology classification for the end of October. And that completes the report.
Thank you very much. Questions from board members?
You know, I, I don't have a question. I, I, I just have a comment. In the, in the ADM, as we, you know, initially we stated it was going to be eighteen thousand and now we're over nineteen thousand. And I, I just get so tickled and so excited and proud that, you know, this division is, you know, because of all of the offerings that we have for students, the Flex program, the academies and so forth. You know, it is my estimation that we're gonna see an increase even in, in, in the next few months and for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year because of all of the, the great things that we're doing in Hampton City Schools and the fact that we have such an amazing leader and supportive school board and so forth. And we have the smart people and doing the right job. And especially, you know, and, and one thing that I said to city council members, we are in a good place because you have to take into consideration that there's going to be a flight, flight of wing moving, transferring from Florida to, to Langley Air Force Base. And we're in a good position when those families move to Hampton to be able to accommodate them because they're going to be looking at our numbers. And I, I, I'm, I'm gonna put it out, there are forecasts that we're gonna be over twenty thousand in twenty-three. So we just need to be prepared, Dr. Smith, for that. And you're doing a good job making sure that we're in a good position to accept these families coming to Hampton.
It's, it's truly a testament to Hampton, the city as well as Hampton City Schools. When we look at, you know, what's happening across the, the state where there are many divisions experiencing a decline in enrollment, ours continues to increase. And then, you know, looking at the number in and of itself, that's certainly a testament to, to what we're doing here in the city of Hampton.
And Ms. Bain will be getting them time they land at Langley. Time they land.
All right, any other questions from board members? Comments? Dr. Smith?
That concludes, I think, our reports, right?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Branch. All right, so moving right along to item number five, deliberation. Five point zero one, review of school board policy GBA B E Employee Information Bulletin. Five point zero two, review of school board policy GBE E Communicable Bloodborne Diseases. Five point zero three, review of school board policy GBE F Maintenance of Drug-Free Workplace. Five point zero four, review of school board policy GBE F R Employee Substance Abuse and Testing Procedures. Five point zero five, review of school board policy GBM Instructional Staff Grievance. Five point zero six, review of school board policy GBO Job Sharing. Five point zero seven, review of school board policy GCA Definition of Employee Groups. Five point zero eight, review of school board policy GCAA Tuition Reimbursement. Five point zero nine, review of school board policy GC B B A. Five point one zero, review of school board policy GC BBB Call-Back Pay. Five point one one, review of school board policy GC BCA Cobra Policy Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act. Five point one two, review of school board policy GCCA Professional Leave Guidelines for Employee/Student Teaching Assignments. Five point one three, review of school board policy GEA Volunteers in the Schools. And those are all falling under, Ms. Ruth. Any questions or comments from board members?
Thank you, Ms. Ruth.
You're welcome.
All right, moving along to item six on the agenda. Items for action. We have six point zero one, revision of school board policy IIA Selection of Instructional Materials. Six point zero two, new school board policy IIA B Supplementary Materials Selection and Adoption. Six point zero three, revision of school board policy IIBDA Reconsideration of Instructional Materials. Six point zero four, revision of school board policy INB Teaching About Controversial Issues. Six point zero five, revision of school board policy KG Community Use of School Facilities. Six point zero six, revision of school board policy KG dash R Community Use of School Board Facilities Daily Rental Fees. And new item, six point zero seven, was personnel item number twenty-two dash three zero three. Did I get that number correct? All right.
The year, twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, okay.
Dash oh-three.
Dash oh-three, okay. I thought something was wrong with my dashes in there. Twenty twenty-two dash zero three, that's it. Had my dashes in the wrong place. All right. All right, so what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of action items six point zero one through six point zero six as a block.
Second. All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve items six point zero one through six point zero six as a block. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Sefanja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Next is item six point zero seven.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the recommendation of the hearing officer in grievance matter twenty twenty-two, Tac Zero Three, and direct the superintendent to move forward with the termination of the employee effective immediately.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Samuels. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Sefanja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Moving along, the next item on the agenda is item seven, hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. Ms. Bowers, have you received any requests?
I have not.
All right, so next, we're on to item eight, information. Eight point zero one, next meeting. The next meeting will be a school board reorganization meeting held on January the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, here at Jones Magnet Middle School at six-thirty. And then also to let you know that the calendar for the two thousand and twenty-three year will be approved on January eleventh at that meeting also. Eight point zero two, items for information, I'll start with Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I would just encourage members of our community, if you enjoyed the outstanding performance by our young people this evening from the Kilgore Gifted Center, we would encourage you to visit the Hampton City Schools homepage. And we have on the homepage their opportunities in terms of the winter concert series. And so we certainly invite our community to be part of the winter concert series, to see our young people in action there. And then again, once again, congratulations to the Phoebus Phantoms for an outstanding season and also to the recipients in terms of the recognition of the schools in terms of the Purple Star schools that we have. I wanted to make certain, Mr.
You know, made a wounded.
And also say that Ms. Bain has established a process in terms of a system to ensure that other schools can apply as we move forward as well. So that is exciting that we have that in, in place going, going forward. I would also like to announce some good news, and that is, of course, winter break begins on December the nineteenth, which is, I know everyone's almost, I think, just about looking forward to winter break, right? And now it will include, it will include Monday, January the second as a day off as well. And so faculty and staff, along with administrators and students, will all return on that Tuesday, January the third of two thousand and twenty-three. And so one additional day for winter break. So thank you. That concludes all of the information from the superintendent.
All right.
And I, we are thrilled in terms of the information shared in terms of CUBE and, and know that those sessions are indeed designed for urban school divisions. And so thank you for sharing and, and providing us with some insights there as well. Thank you. And may I just make one final comment? To acknowledge that our deputy superintendent, Dr. Cagiano, and our chief of secondary school leadership, Dr. Haynes, both, they were able to attend along with other members of our community leadership team but to really be present with the, the Phoebus Phantoms at Liberty. And so thank you for, for being present and supporting our, our young people.
Information from other board members?
I just want to piggyback on what Dr. Smith stated earlier in reference to the day off for our staff on January the second. That means a lot to, to, to the staff and let them know how much we value the work that they do. And, you know, it will be a, a paid day off for full-time and part-time. And I, I also, Dr. Smith mentioned the, the holiday festivities for our young people. On yesterday, I had the, the, the privilege to attend Hunter Beandrew's Winter Celebration. And I tell you, it was standing room only. The cafeteria, I tell you, you know, the cafeteria is extremely large at Hunter Beandrew's because it, it includes elementary and middle school. So it's huge and it was standing room only. And our young people did a fantastic job. I'm just so proud of Kelly Deeds and his staff for just putting this on to the community to highlight, especially when, when we are talking about the performing arts, how important it is, not just for STEM, but the performing arts. How important it is for our young people and families because sometimes in our families don't see our young people performing and doing that kind sort of thing. So it was just an exciting time and I was just so pleased after, for their performance.
And to your point, if we had not, if the superintendent had not received a nod from the board, we would not have Monday, January the second. So when you see members of the school board say, "Thank you."
Any, any other information from other board members? All right, hearing done, I would just like to wish all of you out there happy holidays and take some time to enjoy family and be kind to, to one another. And we'll see you back here in January. The third. At this time, I declare this meeting adjourned with no other business to come before this board.